Do we have everyone on?
Ken Morrow isn't here yet.
Uh, Turner's here?
Yep.
Ken Morrow is not.
Yes. Okay, let's just give it one more minute, or not even a minute, 30 seconds, we'll get Ken, 30 seconds.
I'm gonna unmute our first applicant, if that's okay.
Sure.
Ms. Paulson, you should be able to speak now.
All right, well, Ken's not here, but we do have a quorum, so I am going to begin our meeting. Is it okay, Dorothea?
Yep, give me one second, I'm just trying to make sure Ms. Paulson can be heard.
It looks like she may be muted.
I don't even see her.
Oh, no.
Yeah, she's coming in, she should be.
Okay.
I say that smiling and hoping. Okay.
Okay.
Ms. Paulson appears to be muted still.
That's fine, we're not, wait, here we go, here we go. She's unmuted. There you go, can you hear me better?
I think I just got a call from Ken.
Yes, we heard you, Ms. Paulson, we'll be right with you in a minute. Take your time.
Okay, um. Okay, so, we're gonna begin, Ken Morrow, I think is trying to get in. I think he sent me a... Let's see if he sent me a, yeah, he looks like he called me. Dorothea, can you, can you invite him?
I sent him a link again, I re-sent everybody in panelist link, just a few minutes ago, so he should have it on his email to click in, if he doesn't, he can go to the website, I can get it from there.
In your email.
If, um, if it wasn't Jeff that was at the Village Hall, then it was Ken, because one of the other applicants was just at the Village Hall and called me, thinking that the meeting was still live.
We called everyone and explained that today.
Dorothea, the link was right at the top of my email, I really appreciated that, made it super easy, thank you.
No problem.
All right, so Ken thought it was an in-person meeting, so his phone doesn't, and he's in the parking lot, so he's gonna go home, click in when he's at home, he's just down the street, but we will begin.
Okay.
Hey, good evening, everyone, thanks to Kendra Evans, and Jeff Pollak, and Jeff Turner, Virginia Searle, and Ken, who's coming on, Dorothea, Steve, and all of our team, thank you for being here tonight, and, um, taking time out of your very busy life to serve our community, I really appreciate it. I'm gonna open the meeting up for the history of the Capitol, Monday, January 10th, 2022, at 5:30 PM. Um, I would like to ask all my board members if they need to recuse themselves for any application that's, that's going to come before us tonight.
I do not. I do not.
I do not.
Okay, and I do not either. All right, so I think we have our first applicant, Julie, who is on.
I'm sorry, you made a motion open, we need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, yep, got you, Jeff, roll call, member Pollak?
Yes.
Member Searle?
Yes.
Member, um, Evans?
Yes.
And Chair Coe?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you.
Lisa, Jeff Turner here, can I suggest that Dorothea pull the board about any conflicts of interest, or anything to disclose? It's good, because you're on a recording, when you all answered yes, or that it wasn't not, not possible to tell who was saying what.
Sure, Dorothea, can you do that, please?
Sure, member Pollak?
No, no conflict.
Member Searle, any conflicts?
No, I have no conflicts.
Member Evans?
No conflicts or disclosures.
Chair Coe?
No conflicts.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, for your guidance. Okay, um, the first applicant is Julie at 6th Washington Avenue, she is going to put in another fence, Julie, I think you're gonna be our village fence.
May this, may this be the last fence, I finally found, finally found a house, and it's COVID to buy, so I could be a real, real staple.
Great, great, okay, so, um, we had your application before us, Julie, this fence looks like it is going to be, I've got my little map here, it's going to, surround your whole property from front to back, is that correct?
Um, it's coming off the front corner of the right side of the house, Lisa, it's very tight along the side of the house where my driveway is.
Yeah.
Sorry?
The driveway is open, isn't it?
Are you? Yes, it is, so the fence, I emailed Steve today, um, the fence would just start on the right front corner of the house, and run parallel to the driveway, up 18 inches off the front sidewalk, um, so the driveway would be completely open, and then it would wrap around the house to the back.
Okay, I guess I was just looking at this, this colored form, and it's got a blue line, that looks like it surrounds your whole property, but that might just be the properties.
I believe that.
So, um.
Lisa, I believe that's just locating the lot, on aerial view, you want to look at the next page, which is a representation of the instrument survey map.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, and the fence is a wood picket fence, and we have a picture of it right here, correct?
Um, Julie is. It's a three-foot wood picket fence.
Go ahead.
That's it, Lisa, it would be a three-foot picket fence, it matches the next door neighbor to the right, and it would be painted white.
So, see, that same fence as your neighbor next door.
Yeah.
Yes, same style, the Roman Gothic, same top, I figured it would just look nicer as a continuum.
Okay. So, will you have a gate, I think, yes, a gate, okay, gate is going to be right?
Yes. There's, there's actually going to be three, I let Steve know, because he asked about the backyard, and I, I'm sorry, I just moved into the house prior to, uh, submitting all the paperwork, so there'd be a gate at the sidewalk where you'd enter the front steps of the house, you know, the front, the front mainway, where the sidewalk, walkway is. There would be a gate, um, on the side of the property by the driveway, so I, so I could enter in there, and then in the very back of the property, um, I had let Steve know last week, I think on Friday, that there would be a gate just on the back right corner of the house to the garage, just to seal everything up. All the same size, you know, three-foot gate, the exact same specs, um, and that way it would be fully contained, it's almost identical to what my next door neighbor to the right has.
And we don't have a picture of the gate at all?
Uh, it would just be made out of that, it's being made out of that same exact three foot, uh, it's just standard gate from that exact same, um, style and everything.
And, and so.
He's making it just to match, and it would just have like the hinges and hardware, but it would be just an identical match continuum of that fencing.
Okay, so the same exact size? As the same height as the rest of the gate, okay?
Same, 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 same size, Susan, and same design, and same, same exact materials.
Okay, so, uh, do, Ginny, can I start with you, do you have any questions for the applicant about this application?
I don't have any questions, but I have some comments.
Okay.
Okay, uh, this 1905 building is, uh, is contributing structure to the National Register District, as well as in the village, uh, historic, the village's own historic district, the house itself is a vernacular interpretation of a colonial revival style. And there are no Gothic details on the house. So, my, and, uh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we're not in person, because I could show you this in person if I was, this is Carl Schultz, uh, Carl Schmidt, pardon me, uh, let's see, can I move it back, that doesn't help.
Yeah.
Fences, gates, and garden houses, Carl Schmidt, for those of you who don't know, was an architect who, um, published a number of books, and, uh, architectural styles, but specific elements of architectural styles, for instance, this fence book, but also on cobblestone houses, etc. So, um, in this book, sorry, I just lost the page, I intended to show typically, um, a picket fence of this style, I don't know if you can see this or not, is that visible to any of you?
Uh.
Typically, the.
Yes.
Typically, the picture just of regular, um, uh, dog-eared trim at the top. So, my feeling is that regardless of the neighboring fence, um, in my opinion, the fence would be more appropriate without the Gothic-style picket, with a standard, uh, flat, dog-eared, that dog-eared is pointed, pointed picket, rather than the, the Gothic, what makes the, what makes the fence, uh, picket style that's being, um, requested, is the curved arch, and then the cutout below it, so, it's my opinion that a more, or a more.
Simple?
Uh, yes, a more simple picket style that is not a Gothic style, is more appropriate for this colonial revival style home. And the other thing I was wondering about, but it doesn't show on the photograph, uh, also, also in Mr. Schmidt's, Schmidt's book, are dimensions on picket width, picket width, and the width of the void, um, between, between, between pickets, and with a picket fence like this, uh, the void is only slightly larger than the width of the picket, it's not clear to me, um, what the, what the void size is, it looks like it's nearly, or just slightly more than, uh, the width of the picket, but
The wood.
Without knowing that, I, I can't speak to that issue, but that is, that is something that, um, has in the past.
Yeah.
With previous boards, been something that, um, was, uh, required on fence applications.
That what they, the, the measurement of the.
So, thank you, um.
Yes, yes.
It's, uh, thank you, Virginia, and I, believe me, um, I am very much, oh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Um, I, I definitely respect the historic pre, you know, preservation, Virginia, and I, I appreciate so much your thoughts, um, the house next door to me is an identical, like, mirror image of my house, um, and that's why I went, it's the same exact style, it's almost the exact same floor plan inside, um, I, I actually, you know, walked the village all the time, and tried to find the fencing that matched the other Victorians in the house, but the biggest challenge right now, additionally, is that with COVID, there is, it's near impossible to get specific fencing, they had plastic vinyl that met your specs, um, but they didn't have, like, everything is short-staffed, I knew vinyl wasn't desirable, um, so this was really all that was available in stock, that also matched the house, that's an exact Victorian like mine next door to it, um, so I do respect, um, 100%, it's just that, it's almost impossible to, to get, um, 100% with the way that inventory and everything has just been gone and wiped out with COVID, so I tried to find something that mirrored what's mostly I saw throughout the village and a lot of the houses, um, you know, I wish, I wish it was easier to, uh, to get that exact spec, um, and a lot of that also, like, um, it's, it's just, I, I've been trying for like six, eight months with a lot of the suppliers, it's, it's just been so tough, and that's why I thought if it stayed in line with the other Victorian homes, and with the house that's a Victorian, the same as mine next door, that at least it would be a nice continuum, I thought having two different completely styled fences that didn't align with the same so, style home and look home, um, so that's, um, really what I was trying to hope to achieve during this COVID challenge of this past two years, um, you know, I, I would hope it wouldn't make a, a critical difference, you know, visually, um, in the town.
Well, let me, excuse me, let me correct.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, oh, there you go.
Let me correct you, your house is not a Victorian. It's not a Victorian.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I always think of front porch, and that's my ignorance. Sorry, I, I don't have the expertise that you do, I apologize.
I just want you to understand the style of your house.
Julie, when you're, when the fence person.
Thank you, thank you, and I guess then the one next to it.
Julie, when the fence person came to look at the property and show you the fence, did he show you any other styles that were available, this is the only style he had?
So, they had, they had the dog-eared style that Virginia referred to in the white vinyl, and I was, you know, I mean, I knew that that would last better, but it's not historic, you know, proper, and then, um, they had, um, four, they had, right, 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 and that's why I told him immediately, no, and then they had four-foot fencing, which I told him we had to stay at three foot, and so this is where it gets tricky, trying to find three-foot and wood and dog-eared with those spaces, the past two years has been almost completely impossible, um, we searched high and low, I mean, I went on, like, lumberyard, Wayfair, Overstock, Home Depot, Lowe's, um, it just became trying to find that three-foot to meet this, like, I thought it was more important to meet the three-foot standard, and I would, I prefer personally the look of the dog-eared, it's just that I thought it would look even weirder with my next door neighbor, our houses are so, her fence comes right smack along the side of my driveway to the asphalt, so I thought at least having a matching similar fence actually created a better pres- preservation view, just in my own personal opinion in the village, the two fences matched, they were identical in size, our yards are like almost connected, um, but if it would have been easy to find the three-foot in the dog-eared, I would have done that in a New York minute, it's just this darn COVID stuff.
Sure, thank, thank you, Julie, I, we appreciate the fact that you really, you know, took a lot of time and effort to, to try to match, I mean, I think that's probably one of the, one of the hardest things for, um, village residents to understand, is that we, um, we look at each property very individually, and even though one property had something, we don't really even consider that, and I do appreciate the fact that you were trying to match so that it would look more cohesive, but the way we look at, at our projects and our applications, it's, it's very separate than, um, than the neighbor, or the person down the street, so please.
No, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so, um, with that said, Ginny, do you have any other comments?
No, thank you so much, Lisa, and like I said, it.
Yeah. I lost you.
Thank you, and like I said, it was just, it's the COVID thing the past two years, um, you know, it, it wasn't that I thought all houses were the same.
Yeah, okay, Ginny, did you wanna continue?
Nope.
That's it?
Yep, so some more comments.
Okay. Um, do we have Jeff Pollak that would like to say anything about?
Just a, a bit of clarification, I, it, so this, this proposal has two gates, not three. Am I just clear, I just wanted to be clear on that?
Right, Steve, Steve had, uh, yeah, thank you so much, Jeff, um, Steve, actually, I, when I submitted it, I was in the process of, um, I had purchased the house, but I, I had to live long distance with COVID until I got to the house, when I got to the house, Steve said to me when he saw the diagram, that there was this one missing section there at that back doorway, um, where the garage meets up by the house, and I, so I emailed him and said, yes, I would put a third gate there, and I thought that he had updated that on my application, my apologies, so Steve and I have been going back and forth, and, um, it was added, um, yes. Apologies, I, uh, I, I let him know, and he said, okay, he was all set.
Okay, Steve?
Yeah, the gate, the gate that's in the back will not be physically seen. The gate that runs at the corner of the garage to the little corner of the house will not be seen, the rest of it is all highly visible, but the one that's in back will not be seen from the roadway.
Okay, and the gate is, is the identical gate as the other two, anyways.
Yeah, yeah, she's proposing the same gate in all three spaces.
Okay. Yes.
But that gate is not marked on the drawing, though, right?
Correct.
Right, okay.
So, we're gonna have to, thank you, Jeff, for clarifying that, we're gonna have to make sure that when we make, that we add that as, as a, as a, an addition, okay, thank you.
No other comment.
Anything else, Jeff?
Nope.
Okay, Kendra, Kendra Evans, do you have any comments or questions for the applicant?
I do not for the applicant, I wanted to thank Ginny for bringing her expertise to the group with the fences, and I wonder if that's something that we could make a little cheat sheet for residents before they even present to us, since, you know, we look at each individual house, not your neighbor, so if we could do colonial revival, should have a dog-eared style versus, um, you know, just a couple, like, we have in the, in the code in general, right, if this is what we're looking for with our eaves, or with our windows, I think this might be a nice way to avoid conflict in the future.
We can discuss that, but probably at another time, not, not during the applicant's timeframe.
Thanks. That's, that's a good idea, thank you. Um, so Ken Morrow's still not on, I don't have any other, uh, questions or clarifications for the applicant, uh, does anybody wanna make a motion for this application? Anyone? Okay, I guess I can make a motion. Uh, at the meeting of the HPP on January 10th, 2022, the following motion was made, I make a motion that the HPP approve with conditions, the application for a fence, made by Julie Paulson, at, oh gosh, Julie, what's your new address, 6th Washington Ave. Uh, the conditions would be to have a third fence in the back.
Right.
I'm sorry.
Gate, gate.
Gate, I'm sorry, a third gate in the, what's the location again, the back right of the property alongside the driveway?
Back right corner of the home to the corner of the garage.
Back right corner of the home to the.
Yes, the back.
Northeast corner, oh, sorry, northwest corner.
North corner.
Northwest corner.
Okay.
Is that right? No, northeast, northeast corner, I was right the first time.
Sorry, Dorothea, northeast corner.
Southeast corner.
Yes. Southeast corner, wow.
Some of you can look at the.
Get a compass out here.
Do I have a second?
There is a north arrow on the, on the map, but it's not indicated as, as a north arrow.
Yeah.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I'll call. Member Pollak?
Yes.
Member Searle?
No.
Member Evans?
Yes.
Chairperson Coe?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thanks, Julie, I appreciate it.
Julie, Julie, make sure that you get me the contractor.
Thank you guys, happy new year, happy new year, I look forward to seeing all you, thank you.
Thank you.
Julie? Julie, are you still on?
I was, it was on my application, did you not see that?
All right, I, I'll, I'll check the paperwork, I just gotta make sure I have, I gotta make sure I have the building to get from you.
Yeah, he's, uh, he's. Okay, his, um, his email and cellphone and all of that are on the application that I put on there, and if you have any trouble, please just call me tomorrow, or email.
Yeah, I'll call you tomorrow, Julie.
Okay, thanks, Julie, okay, let's go to our second application at 15 Elm Brook Road. Do we have Joe?
15 Elm Brook, hold on, let me move them in. They should be showing up here any second. There they are.
Okay, hi, Joe? Are you there?
There they are.
I can't hear anybody.
Yes.
Joe, is that you? I don't hear anybody, does anyone?
I don't know.
Um. Is Joe muted?
No, not on our end, it's on their end. Hello, can? We can't hear you. Give him a minute to straighten it out.
While he's straightening it out, I just have a comment for Steve. Steve, um, I know Ginny had some concerns that the application was not completed, and she will probably let you know exactly what she means by that, um, I really, really wish, this is a really nice photo of what's currently there, and remember how I really like when you draw in where the other window is gonna be right on where the one is there, because that would really help me, because right now, I can't picture where.
No other, there is no other window, that purely the door is being removed there.
I thought that they're changing that window and making it larger.
Here's the, here's the drawing.
No, different house, different house.
Oh, sorry, Washington, that's right.
Yeah, because this is a drawing, or this is the other shade, and it looks like that window is quite a bit different and bigger than this one, so I can't visualize if it's sliding over. I don't know where it is on that house.
Yeah, I mean, be honest with you, I don't know myself either, I'd have to look at it, Lisa, and I didn't get any comments from anybody, otherwise I probably would have done that.
Well, I, may I make a comment?
Yeah.
Not, not only.
You, you not think, don't you think we ought to wait for the applicant before we comment?
Okay.
Well, I know he's on, he just can't hear, or he can't talk.
He just wants his phone, he's gonna call in, is it your intent to call in?
He's trying to call in, I'm just not seeing him come through yet. I'm working on it right now, soon as I see him.
Well, if he's, he can hear, so, this is, uh, this is directly from Ginny to Steve, so Ginny, you wanna continue with that?
Well, it's not only to Steve, but it's to the applicant.
Oh.
On the application form, there's a list of required supporting documentation for additions and new construction, which this is new construction.
Yeah.
So, first thing that's required is an instrument survey map, there's no instrument survey map attached to this application.
Okay, hold on one second, Ginny, hold on.
They're not changing a footprint.
I don't think this is, yeah, I don't think this is considered new construction.
No. All right, what are you considering, the doors and windows?
Doors and windows.
Okay. Uh, there are no drawings to scale of the elevations affected. There are, there's a limited list of, oh, okay, the materials are described. But this, this reduced. It's not. It's not helpful, and it's not required. And it's none of our business what goes on inside. And do we not have interior elevations of the kitchen?
Well, we don't, we don't need that.
I know, but they're included in the application, this, this part is for Steve, but also for the applicant, that's not, it's not necessary information, but the most important information that's missing is drawings to scale of the elevations affected, I do not feel I can make a well, uh, thought-out and reasoned decision on an application without having drawings at scale.
Thank you, Ginny, Steve, did you wanna comment?
Um, am I, I'm not muted, all right, this application came in kinda at the end hour, we decided to put it in because they were, were wishing to get this, um, put in on this meeting, so there may be a few things that are slightly lacking, but the reality is you're removing a door, so you're gonna cover that space where the door exists, and you're expanding the window, uh, with, other than that, there's nothing else, I mean, relevant, other than the fact that I think they're going to a triple window versus a double on the back, and they should be able to explain the size difference, and which way it's expanding compared to where it is on the wall, the only thing this board has judgment on is the look of that window on the back of the house compared to what sits there today, um, night, the measurements and all the other stuff are a night. Um, night, the measurements and all the other stuff are a nicety. But is it really necessary to make a decision on expanding and widening a window and removing a door?
What's necessary is what's required on the application form. So that we are consistently looking at all applications equally. If we decide. For whatever reason, that something is not required. Then we are undermining our. Our uh.
Consistent.
Ability in any decision going forward.
Yes, Steve, I've I have a very hard time understanding what the placement of this window, the size. And I feel the same as Ginny that I need to have an elevation drawing of of where this is on that backside. I bought the property today. And I and it's significantly going to change the look of the of the house. It's going to look beautiful, but I I can't vote on something that I have no idea where it's going to be placed.
That's fine. Your board, your board can do what it wishes. But one of the things, and I will, I will make a comment of this. If somebody would have looked at this and said something, say, last Thursday, Friday. This information could have been provided. I missed it. I'm I'm not perfect. But somebody else reviewed or other people review this. This could be forwarded and that information garnered to not lose an applicant thirty days over some uh slight missing information.
Okay, um, just to clarify, it's it's whether it's slight or big, it's still missing information. And we need to have the information that we've asked for that is that is appropriate for each application. Everyone gets the same treatment. So. I don't feel comfortable making a decision. Ginny doesn't feel comfortable. Um, Jeff Pollock, I don't know how you feel about this and and.
No, not good.
So we we may have to table this until we get the the full application information that we need.
It's a board. That's a board's decision. That's that is your your prerogative.
So I'm gonna have to table this until we have the elevation drawings of of this this window.
Would would it make sense to hear from the applicant at all and?
Not really, Jeff, because we don't have the information that we need.
He needs to understand what we need, what we need to see.
And Steve can help him understand what what we need. Steve knows what we need. He could work directly with Steve to get the information we need for a completed application.
It would not. It would not hurt though that since they are on here and doing like an informational need to make sure that everything you do need or any other questions they have can be answered so they can make sure they have a completed application.
Okay, well, you know exactly what we need, Steve. You can let them know if the applicant has any other questions that would like to ask the board. Please go ahead and do that. Is the applicant on?
Muted. I can't.
Still muted. Okay. So we're having trouble getting the applicant on right now.
Wait a minute, hold on. Let me see if this works.
Or he could use chat and see if he has a question for us.
Okay, try speaking now.
Guys, hear us now?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Sorry about our technical difficulties. We are. Here we go. Sorry about that. Joe Hancock is here with with me as well. Appreciate the the board's consideration. Joe, I think we have what we need in terms of our directives, but.
I think so, yeah. Just uh, if Steve has a clear picture of uh, what we need to provide in terms of scale. Essentially, just long and short of it is the window is not going to change in height. It's just going to change in width. And it'll be shifting over the existing door opening about two feet. So.
We under. We understand that, but that needs to be in the application for, because if we're going to vote on the application, it needs to be in it. So we need to have a a scale drawing of that in our application to vote.
Yeah, Lisa, I don't think we're debating that. Appreciate your position and uh, we'll we'll work expeditiously to submit a proper application. Thank you very much.
Great.
Thank you. Sorry for the delay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to fifty-two Heatherhurst Drive for windows. Is the applicant available?
Uh, I think Ken's trying to speak and he can't. Hold on. Mr. Morrow is here. Ken, we can't hear you.
He's muted. Ken, you're muted.
Ken.
Okay, fifty-two Heatherhurst. I'll need that person to raise their hand.
Ken is still muted though. He's got to unmute himself.
Yeah, I can't do it for him. I sent an unmute request.
Do we have fifty-two Heatherhurst Drive?
What I'm trying to.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that. I just had some basic questions about uh, the application we were just talking about. Are they? They're gonna. They've got these like three doors. Or actually, they have these like. Uh, a big kind of a curved window set in the back and they're going to put a door in the middle of that, correct?
Correct.
And then. Uh, and I think they're trying to show that in the picture below, which is upside down. I couldn't read the. Even though I'm in sales and can read upside down, I couldn't read that.
So Ken, if you go to the property, what they're doing is they are going to mirror the exact same door to window situation as they have on the front side on the backside.
So you see that door, it the regular door in the back? Are they gonna? They're gonna just remove that and expand the window?
Yes, switch.
Yeah, they're gonna take the door off and then they're gonna window bigger.
And then there's a picture of another door down below. That they have hand-drawn design of uh.
The new door goes.
Before.
Ken, the new door goes in the backside of the porch to mirror the door on the front of the porch.
It's gonna look.
I mean, that's where they're adding the door. Uh, that's a currently a window.
Yes.
Correct, in the center of the porch because they're losing the door access to the backyard.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, moving on to Heatherhurst. Do we have a applicant on?
You're muted, Dorothea.
I'm looking for a Mr. or Mrs. Wood if or someone representing them. If they're here, please raise your hand if you're in the attendee.
Wait, who's the contractor on this one?
Who would? Renewal by Anderson.
Yes.
Okay, do we have? Do we have the?
I don't see any hands raised. Um, I'm going to say we move on to twenty-four Washington. I do see Ms. Heisman, so I am going to.
So we're gonna move on to twenty-four Washington with which this is an information-only application.
Jeff's raising his hand.
Who is?
Can can I? Can Steve call um, Ms. Wood or her representative to see what's going on? Steve, do you have that number?
I have a number. Um, um. Susan reached out and left messages for these people, but I will try again right now.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, so who do we have on for twenty-four Washington Avenue for information only?
Uh, looks like Ms. Heisman. I'm opening that up right now.
Okay, great. Good evening.
She's still coming over.
Great.
Hey, Dorothea.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do not have their number because they they packet you printed out has everything redacted.
All right, hold on. Okay, Ms. Heisman is here and ready to go. I'll send you a, I'll call.
All right.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good. Okay, so you're here uh, for a project, new windows.
New windows.
Only uh, so we're going to try to help you uh, answer any questions you may have for the board.
Okay, great. Um, so I think you may have this drawing here.
Yes.
Okay, um, so this is the side of the house. Um, the bottom picture is the existing window location. Um, the top should be the proposed window location to scale. Um. And then the larger drawing is not to scale, but it's just just to so you can see. I guess. Um, more detail. Um, so these would be double-hung wood windows. Um. And we are working with Roberts Kitchens in the Village.
So I don't see, um, maybe I don't haven't seen. I don't see from the outside of the house. Um, what this is gonna look like.
This is a. A drawing right came this afternoon.
Oh, I didn't see that.
It's this.
The email that came this afternoon, the pictures of the house were should have been sent with the packet for information only.
Yep. So does any? So does anybody? Can somebody just hold that up and show me? I don't see anybody here. Wait, let me see. Um. Can somebody talk? Maybe my thing is really weird. Whoever's got a picture, if you talk, it'll pop up on my screen, I think.
Okay, I'm pulling it up right now.
Beautiful, okay.
The one, the bottom one is the existing, Lisa.
Yeah.
The top one is a proposed of adding or separating and putting two windows in because they want to remodel the kitchen.
Okay, can I see that again? Okay, so the bottom one is what's there now.
That's, yep.
Top one is what you're. So you're gonna basically just put two additional one. You're move your. Okay, got it.
That's uh, if you have the pictures that came with a packet, that's on the driveway side all the way in the back left corner of the house.
Okay.
Not highly visible.
Mm-hmm. Now, the size of the windows that you're proposing, how uh, what's the difference in size as compared to the one that's there now as far as height goes?
Um, as far as height goes, they're a tad smaller, but they're more in line with the original windows of the house.
Those where?
The original windows of the house are at the front or uh, when when you look at this picture. Um, these are original. Oh, sorry, these are original. This was an addition.
Okay.
So these are not original to the house, but these are. And so these windows would look more like this size. But they'll just be in pairs.
I can see from the interior uh, picture of the kitchen that these windows appear to have no mountains at all. They're just uh, uh, you know, one over ones.
Yeah, they're just um, double-hung, no mu- no munnions or yeah, grids.
And and what's the style of the other windows in the in the side of the house near the front? It's not integrated here, but.
They're the same, double-hung.
The front windows, Jeff, are one over one.
Okay.
Except for in the attic. In the attic, there's a diamond pattern in the upper sash.
Okay.
So there's no windows on the house that have grids?
That's the top.
Only in the attic, I believe.
The top, yeah.
Yeah, I see that now.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the windows that you're proposing are gonna look like the rest of the windows in the house.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I have. Go ahead, Kendra.
Sorry, I was gonna say similar to the other windows in the house, but I would, if we're going to do the double. The side-by-side double-hung like there are in the attic, I would I would want to see those um, luntens in the top of it. Or I'd want them to be singular panel, um, like the rest of the windows. If we're updating to make it look more like the original, that would be my inclination.
Well, I believe all the other windows except for the attic are just one over one. The original windows on the first and second floor were one over one.
Yes.
My my comments. Uh, Ms. Heisman are these. Um. The only paired windows that I have a photograph of are the attic windows and they have a. A site-built molyon. A molyon is the divider be is the divider between the two windows. And when they, when windows historically, a house of this age. When there were paired windows, the windows came separately and the molyon was built on site, so it's wider. What you're showing, what I believe is being shown here are what's called factory mold windows. The molyon is, the windows are joined together as two windows or three windows, as it looks like um, may already exist in your kitchen. When the when the molyon is so narrow, that means they were assembled as a unit, three-piece unit in the factory. So my first comment is um, that if you're going to have double windows. That the molyon between them, they should not be factory-molded. Or if they are factory-molded, the factory needs to uh, figure out how to make the molyon between the two windows the same width as the molyon in the attic.
Okay.
Additionally, the general proportion of the original windows in the house. Appears to be about uh, twice as tall as they are wide. And that is not the case with the new windows. So it's my opinion that those new windows need to be narrower. So that the the height to width relationship of the new windows is the same as the height to width relationship of the original windows.
Okay.
So those are my only two comments. Otherwise.
Very good.
You know, I I understand how great it is to have windows in the kitchen. Can't live without them in my house.
Yeah, we would love to have windows over the sink.
Yes.
Um, and.
It helps a lot. It helps a lot in the summer when you're doing dishes after dinner.
Yeah, that's right.
To be able to open the window.
Okay, Kendra, do you have any other suggestions?
No, I agree with Ginny.
Okay, and how about Jeff Pollock?
Same good comments, same here.
Yes, and I agree with Ginny as well. Um, Lisa, do you have any other questions for us?
Okay, so if the the molyons between the two windows are the same width as the ones in the attic.
Yes.
And then um, the proportion should be. A little bit more akin to the original windows.
Yes.
Okay.
The windows, the windows being proposed now, my guess is. That if you have a site-built molyon or a molyon that's going to match the width of the attic windows. I don't think you're gonna lose any any height on the windows, but the windows will become narrower. You don't need to expand the opening that's already being planned. The windows just get a little narrower.
Okay, that makes sense.
Because they look. They look as though they might be the same height. Now, let me ask another question in looking at these. No uh, trim is shown on the new windows as proposed. And I would also expect to see the same um, size and proportion. And material would trim around those windows, not just put in with a brick mold with no trim.
Okay, I don't think that the windows that we currently have have the trim, but we can do the trim.
Yeah, I would think what you said Ginny, they having the wide molyon and the wide trim will allow you to thin the window out a little bit and not look. They won't lose the space because you're gonna add wider trim on both sides and a wide molyon.
Yep.
Correct.
Well, the I'm I'm mentioning the trim, Ms. Heisman, because what makes it obvious. That the windows that you are omitting are replacement windows or or new windows to the house, not original. Is that there's no trim around them.
Mm-hmm.
And that's the same thing for the windows on the second story.
Mm-hmm.
It's obvious that those are new windows because there's no trim.
Right.
Okay, does that make sense, Lisa?
Yes, it does.
If you have any, if you have any questions, forward them to uh, Steve and he can forward them to me. I'll be happy to discuss it with you or with uh. Or with uh.
Your contractor.
Your contractor.
Okay.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
All right, Lisa, anything else you would like to ask us?
Um. I don't think so. I think that's everything.
Great. Looks like a great project. We look forward to seeing the formal application.
Okay, sounds great. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye. Dorothea, how are we doing on Heatherhurst? Anything?
I tried the number on the application for the uh, contractor. There's no answer. This has been a gentleman. He was a holdover. If you recall, he showed up to the meeting one night. I was very upset.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's been several reachouts and we wanted to get him on the application because agenda, because he has been in that position. But he's not responding to Steve Wright, so. All right, we're gonna hold him over to the next agenda. There's really nothing we can do.
Okay, can I just make a comment on this? I'm. I'm pleased that our our new format for dealing with replacement windows has at least in this instance been followed through. It it's very clear. It gives us a supporting documentation for making a decision.
Yes, thank you.
At this point, I would be in favor of of their application. Because the process, the process has been followed appropriately.
Thank you for that, Jenny. Okay. All right, um, so we are, we've got a couple set of minutes that we need to approve. Everybody did get the minutes for October 19th.
I think Steve has a question.
Okay, Steve?
Yeah, um, just to let you know, and it didn't get, I'm, I was surprised it didn't get on the agenda, but the, we still had a holdover. From last meeting for, I think it's 27 Washington, the metal roof. The actual roofing contractor is on the meeting tonight. I didn't know if that's something you wanted to discuss or, or that we can't because it's not on the agenda.
Yeah, my understanding is we can't because it's not on the agenda.
And the applicant isn't here.
I, I just wanna say that, uh, I think the roofing contractor was in the parking lot. Uh. So he at least tried.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ken. Yeah, so, yeah, we need to have it on the agenda so that it's, you know, the community is notified and we need the applicant, or the, the owner. To have a formal, um, discussion on this. Thank you. Actually, there's only one set of meeting minutes. It's Monday.
Just gonna say, I picked up, I picked up, uh, I picked up the packet on Friday afternoon and, and I only have one.
Yes, we only have one. I'm sorry, just.
You'll have the rest of them next meeting.
Okay, so, um, did everybody have a chance to look at Monday, October 19th, 2021's meeting minutes? Um.
I, I have.
In the, yeah, so have I, and the ability to, uh, make a motion to approve them.
Well, well. I have a comment.
Yeah.
Uh, just going forward, probably not necessary on these minutes. I would just as soon approve them, but my name is misspelled every other time.
Yeah.
About all of them, so don't worry about it this time, but going forward, it's OCK. Thank you very much.
We'll get it corrected.
Dorothea, I, I have the same issue. There's no, there's no E on the end of my name.
I'm gonna put a disclosure in. I'm actually having someone else type these, so.
Okay.
Well, but I'm checking them, so it's still on me, so we'll get those corrected. I apologize. Obviously, we shouldn't be making those mistakes.
That's okay.
And I have, I have one other. One other item, um. This is on, uh, 42 Monroe Avenue.
Okay.
Uh, that's an addition. And. Uh, we have no findings of fact for that, so we should develop some findings of fact. Before we approve this, because this is, this is an addition. This is not. Oh, well, all, all decisions should have findings of fact, but particularly. An addition should have findings of fact, so Dorothea, I guess I would add that, um. This, uh, house is a contributing structure in the National Register, National Historic District. Uh, as well as the Village of Pittsburgh Historic District. Um. That it is in keeping with. Um. The. The Village of Pittsburgh's ordinance as well as the design guidelines.
Do we also have to write that there's no negative impact on the resource?
Yes, no negative impact on the historic resource. It's on the garage as well. Then it's on a set, the addition is being made to a secondary structure.
Alright, thanks Jenny for that.
Alright, so hold on. The right way to do this. Is to approve the minutes of that meeting. And then add those findings as a supplement to board's decision at, at that meeting. So they'll be part of this meeting added as a supplement.
Okay.
That's, that's the correct procedural way to do it.
Thank you. I don't know that stuff. I'm glad you do.
Okay, so, so Jeff, does that mean that I can make a motion to approve the minutes with the, um, addition of? The findings of facts?
No, the findings of fact will be in the minutes of this meeting.
Okay, so how can we approve?
You can prove the, the findings of fact can be added at any time.
Okay, so I can. So if I have to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Yes.
Think about with the addition of findings of facts in the next meeting?
Nope.
Minutes, okay. Alright, I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for Monday, October 19th, 2021. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Jeff, gotcha. Alright, um, member Pollak?
Yes.
Member Searle?
Yes.
Um, member Evans, I don't believe you were.
Yeah.
Hasn't yet. Um, Chairperson Coe?
Yes.
Member Morrow?
I'd like to say that I don't have any conflicts from the beginning of the meeting kind of stuff. And, uh, I'd say I approve of them, yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. So we do have, um, just, uh, some, a quick discussion on the, um, moving of the, the board date.
Um, Lisa, would you like me to share my little chart there so I can give an idea of what we're trying to do here? Okay, hold on.
So Dorothea is gonna share her chart, but we, I had kinda talked to each and every one of you to see what your thoughts were about changing the meeting to Thursday. There were a couple conflicts, so Dorothea asked if we could keep it on Monday, but do the third Monday of the week instead of the second. And I didn't go back to ask you guys that because I figured we would just. Talk about that now, so.
Any difference to me? First, the first, second, third or fourth, it doesn't matter to me.
It's good for me.
And instead of, instead of the second Monday, it would be the third Monday. Kendra, how does it come for you?
Totally fine.
Okay, it's fine with me. Ken, Ken Morrow, how do you feel about that?
A third Monday would be fine with me.
Okay.
Um, sorry, I can't show my chart. Apparently, my home computer really doesn't like to show.
That's okay, okay, Dorothea.
Um, real quick, you know, one of the reasons we were trying to push the date to Thursday and keep everything consistent, and I understand the board has conflict with Thursdays. Is Wednesday or late date later in the week better, or? I mean, thrilled that you're willing to move to the third week. That helps applicants, then they can go to planning zoning first, then you, it's the proper. Way to go through the chart, but I just wanna make sure. The closer we put these to the end of the week, the easier it is on staff and is on getting you proper applications and everything, it'll flow better. So it's totally up to the board. I, no undue pressure, but I'm just offering it up. If you prefer Monday, we'll stay there.
I personally prefer Monday.
I can't do Tuesday.
Okay.
Um, I can do any other Thursday, just not the third Thursday because I have a standing board meeting. Um, but personally, I am struggling, uh, with the ability to get out to the sites, um, with just the Friday to Monday turnaround. Just as Steve said, if any of us had seen the application. Ahead of time, right, there were no business days for anybody to give a heads up, or at least, you know, I, I couldn't have done that, so. I would love it to be later in the week or to just get our packet earlier. I don't know how that would influence the applicants or any difficulty that it would put, put on the staff or the applicant, but. I, I'd love to find a way to get that packet earlier.
Yes, Kendra, I, I think that we probably have an opportunity to get the packet earlier. I know that we had done that for a while. But what I found, um, before you came on the board is that I would call everybody, um, before the meeting and I started to do that on Friday. And when I called, people are like, oh, well, I haven't even looked at it yet. So that's why I started calling everybody on Monday. Because literally people waited that long to review the application. So originally, we did have it that the board got the application on Wednesday. And then the, then the meeting was on Monday, but when I was calling on Wednesday, even Thursday, even Friday, people are like, oh, well, I haven't looked at it yet, so I'm gonna just look at it the weekend. So that's kind of why we said, well, if no one's looking at it until, um, Monday or the weekend anyways, I don't need to call them on Wednesday, but we can certainly revisit that, especially if. If you, you know, we could always send it out on a Wednesday or Thursday and I could, you know, still call people on Monday and.
Yeah, I mean, an extra business day for me would be super helpful, uh, just to.
How does that sound? Yeah, could we get the meeting minutes, um, out more like a Wednesday or Thursday instead of Friday?
Well, okay, the packet, as I do a packet, and we have to understand, I'm right, you fell into a week and this is part of the reason for this, and this isn't me complaining. Um, currently, the way this has ran the last two months, I'm putting out a PZDA packet, your packet and the village board packet all at the same time.
Mm-hmm.
So the minutes, getting them from Susan, who's been writing them for me, and she's awesome, and thank God, um. I didn't get a chance to throw them, I put them in the packet. So when I sent you the packet on Wednesday, Lisa, they were there. So I assume everybody's reviewing, you're reviewing everything in whole. And telling me to go ahead and release to the board, so I didn't send anything to the board until Friday, because I thought you wanted to review everything given to the board.
Right.
If that's the status, it's still, it's in the packet. For me, everything that the board's gonna see is in that packet. It's the same thing with the village board.
I went.
So I don't send them out on their little own because, A, I thought you didn't want that to happen piecemeal out, so.
Right.
Anything involved with the packet stays with the packet.
Right, so my, my question for you, Dorothea, is would you be able to have everything we need the Wednesday before the Monday? To get to me so that I could release it by Wednesday afternoon?
Okay, that's exactly what we did this meeting. So that's what you're looking for. Yes, you can get it Monday or whatever. Yes.
Does it give you enough time?
That would be very helpful. Thank you.
Okay, alright, let's do that, Dorothea, if that's possible, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay.
Well, it also, it also will help out if I've missed something, just like the, one of the previous application. If you're looking for some piece of information that can be garnered beforehand. You have two extra days. It will allow me to contact the applicant and get the extra information, so we're not wasting their and your time.
Yeah, and you know, Steve, that, that brings up a very good point. We are still in the process of trying to get this, this process, um, more streamlined, and I know that, um, there's been a lot going on. With the, with the marrow switch and, you know, with the COVID and everything that kind of, uh. Basically put that in the backseat, but I know that, Dorothea, and we've, we've looked at how we can make a checklist so that we can make sure that everything is in there. So that is in process. Um, as soon as we get a little, a little manpower, we can maybe move further on that. Dorothy, I know that that's kind of in your lap as well.
It, the application was, I think it was getting close to being re finalized for the new format.
Right.
I'll have to follow up with the mayor because that was being done between her and Marina, and I was kind of out of that loop, and then it kind of fell apart.
Okay.
When Marina left right in the beginning of November, so, and then we had the holidays, so let me see what's going on and see if I can get that out relatively in a short term. And we can get that result because I think the new application process will be smoother for everybody.
Yes, I agree. Okay.
I just had one more comment on the packet. I, having the blue form in there was really, really helpful. I imagine it was a lot of extra legwork for you, and I just wanted to say that I appreciated it. I found the packet very comprehensive and it was easy to go through it this month, so thank you.
Appreciate it. Steve did the legwork and getting everything together and gives it to me, so we tried to give you everything you guys need to make a decision, so.
Kendra?
Yeah.
If you're not familiar with it, uh, the blue forms and also the National Register nomination form are both available online on the village website.
Right, but I didn't have to do it because they did it for me. That's why I was saying thank you. It's all right there.
If in fact it's missing, you always have the opportunity to look that up yourself, just so that you are aware of what the resources are in the village.
Okay, do I have any other comments or any, um, anything the board wants to say?
For the third Monday now?
Is that what we're doing? Monday is good for everybody.
Correct.
Dorothea, will you, will you send out by email a, a new list of dates?
That I will do.
Change it on my calendar?
Yep, and it seems planning zoning is happy to go to the first week. Um, village board, we're gonna stay the same. And the Thursdays might happen for PZDA and it might happen for village board, although I can't speak for the village board and I refuse to try. I'm going to be meeting with them tomorrow night, so we'll see how that goes.
Okay, well, it sounds like, I mean, we're, we're fine with whenever you need to switch it over. Okay, alright. So does anybody else have any, yes, Kendra?
Sorry, in February, the third, um, Monday, our first meeting would be President's Day. Does that impact our meeting at all? Because that happens.
Yes, that's one of the concerns. That was one of the concerns. That's why we kind of went to the end of the week because, believe it or not, we ran into no holidays for the whole year. So you guys are gonna still run into holidays, so I'll have to adjust that and I'll send those dates out, so we would move you. Let's see, that would be the, I'll, I'll look. I think it's gonna be the, it'd be the Tuesday then.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no, unless that, the board decides they want a Wednesday or whatever. I'll send you the dates and you can let me know and we'll take a look.
Okay, thank you.
Did you happen to see, uh, Dorothea, did you happen to see, uh, Lily Lanfier's request to be copied on the email with a change of dates?
Uh, I didn't see it, but I will copy her in.
It just popped up on the bottom of my screen.
Yeah, you know, I have a habit not looking at chat at the village board meetings because it serves no purpose, um, but. Yes, um, I'm having a problem with poor Lily. I keep forgetting to send her the packet, the email link, the meeting link, because. You know, we have no liaisons to the village board. I wonder why, but anyway.
The liaison.
Yeah, she is, or, well, not to the village, the, the village board has no liaisons, just the planning, zoning and historic preservation board, so I'm not used to adding that person on the list to get things.
Got it.
It's a Dorothea misfire, but I will correct it and hopefully by next month, um, so there you go.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for your hard work. I know it's a thankless job.
Oh, thanks. It's okay. Love what I do. I'm here.
Okay, if anyone, if no one else has anything else for the board, I'm gonna make a, a motion to end the meeting for tonight. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, member Pollak?
Yes.
Member Searle?
Yes.
Member Evans?
Yes.
Member Morrow?
Yes.
Chairperson Coe?
Yes. Alright, thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Alright.
Right.